Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Angie, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunting.
Present.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here. And John, could you leave us some prayer tonight?
Dear God in heaven, we ask that you would bless us with wisdom as we consider the business of the people of Grashick County tonight. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn. Okay. On the agenda, we have one change, number four under M. The senior citizens haven't received something back, the resolution back from their attorney, so we might as well take that off there. Without an objection, without any objections. And did anyone else have any changes?
The ones that millaged.
This year, they won it on the August election, but we have one more meeting that will be able to still be on.
Okay.
Okay.
Just clarifying wording on it.
It seems like you can't do anything without the lawyers. Alrighty, looking for a resolution or a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Commissioner Smith, have a second.
Second.
You decide who grabs.
George.
George got it, I guess. Second by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed. Then we have a resolution. Here. Alrighty. Yeah, Mary, can you come up?
And I'm not sure if you want to go. Thank you.
Okay, and the resolution reads, whereas Mary Merchant as Register of Deeds has devoted 10 years to assisting citizens, attorneys, title searches in review, filing, and receiving documents necessary for transactions, and whereas during her tender tenure, Mary Merchant introduced technology for electronic storage and indexing of documents to ensure greater accessibility for members of the public, and whereas to ensure that transactions could continue during the disruption of the pandemic, Mary Merchant personally staffed her office during the lockdown due to COVID-19, thus ensuring that documents remained available, and whereas Mary Merchant is leaving the Register of Deeds office in order, thus assuring a smooth transition into the future. Therefore, be it resolved that the Grashick County Commissioners honor Mary Merchant and recognize her exemplary service to the community, and be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners wish for Mary all happiness and health in retirement.
Thank you.
Would you place that in record?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Jan, alrighty, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Very much. So I'd like to just make a comment that Mary, we're having a retirement party for her on Friday from two to four up in the retumba outside our office.
And I'd like to reintroduce the future Register of Deeds, it's Kim Van Hoes, and she'll do a wonderful job, I just see well. She's been working with me all week, so.
Great. You want?
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Friday, two to four?
Four, yeah.
Alright. Ellie, you're up, in your annual audit.
Alright, good evening, everyone. Getting the presentation up on the screen here. If the clicker works. Oh, good, excellent. New technology everywhere I go. Tricks. Alright, well, I am here to present the results of the September 30th, 2021 audit. How some of the financial statements and about compliance and internal control related matters. So the county did receive an unmodified or clean audit opinion, which means that we believe the numbers presented in your financial statements do not have any material issues that need to be corrected before being presented. Well, that's, that's a good opinion that you want us to give. One note here that I always think for you, because this is a little different than the way you think about things. When you look at your actual audited financial statements, your general fund is actually comprised of what you normally think of the general fund, and then the list of other funds that we have here on the screen. And this is solely an accounting function. It goes back to something called GASB 54, and some rules within that standard that have to be applied for external financial reporting and GAAP financial statements. Always like to make sure that we point that out and you're aware of that. A couple of kind of long-term highlights as it relates to capital assets and some debt. The county this year did have additions to capital assets, so it could be buildings, equipment, vehicles of about 413,000 versus depreciation expense of about 468,000. Those numbers are pretty similar, so it's kind of a good trade-off. You're, you're making improvements as you go while you're also depreciating assets that you have purchased in previous years. Just to give you a couple ideas of what's included in that 413,000, there was rooftop HVAC system put in, there were several updates performed at the parks, and then there was also some patrol car modernization that those dollars were spent on. So just a few high-level areas for you. As it relates to the drainage district, which for the county is something called a component unit, so not one of your normal governmental funds you're used to looking at. We do kind of watch the debt within this component unit. You'll see in this particular fiscal year, there was about 1.43 million in new debt issued, and then there was about 1.54 million in debt paid off. So that, that overall debt balance did decrease just slightly this year. The amount of debt that is taken on annually is dependent on the number of projects that the Drain Commission feels is necessary, and then they factor in those taxpayers who make payments kind of upfront of those projects versus those who want to spread those payment out over a few years. So overall outstanding debt at the Drainage District was about 12.4 million. Alright, we're going to talk for a few slides here about general funds. So here you can see the revenue in general fund in 2020 versus 2021. So you'll see that property taxes looks like it increased significantly. There is a caveat there, though, most of this is really a timing issue of when some payments came in between fiscal years, mostly related to City of Alma. So hopefully, when we look at this going forward, this is gonna even back out and we're going to quit seeing these up and downs in this area quite so drastically. Okay, intergovernmental dollars in this fund were down just slightly as were charges for services and kind of some of your other revenue categories. So you can see here, overall, the past five years, 2021 versus 2020, there was an overall increase in revenue. Again, some of those categories decreased, and most of the increase was related to property taxes. But overall, your revenues in the general fund have held relatively steady compared to maybe what some people would think. You've stayed above that $12 million line there the last five years. Alright, here we can see general funds expenditures.
Year over year.
General government category did increase this year. With COVID and some of the different grant funding, some of these categories are getting harder and harder to compare one year to another, because you're not always talking apples to apples, where things are being recorded expense-wise. Changes if there are grant dollars available and some other funds. So within the general government category, there were a lot of increases and decreases across different departments. One of the more notable changes here would be that during 2021, there was a significant increase in the legal fees paid for the wind turbine litigation that's out there. So that's going to be a significant portion of the increase. On the public safety side here, you would think that this looks like you're not spending as much on public safety, and that would be true in the general fund. However, some expenses that historically have been paid in the general fund were moved to a different fund that had some federal money come in during the year that could cover public safety costs. Was done in the general fund, those expenses were picked up elsewhere. And then as a trend, here you can see over the last five years, kind of what your expenditures have been doing. Again, kind of holding around that $12 million mark. Alright, here we can see what those revenues look like in relation to expenditures. So on the graph, the revenues there are that blue line. Anytime that line is above kind of that tannish olive colored line are going to be years where you're able to add back fund, add back to fund balance. Versus in 2019, here, we had a year where we used up just a little bit of fund balance. A very high level, you can see. So you can see for 2021, our revenues significantly exceeded our expenditures. And so if we go over here to what our ending fund balance amount is, you can see the bar of 2021 increased pretty significantly in 2020. Dollar increase. So that your total general fund fund balance now exceeds $9 million. Pretty cool accomplishment for a rural county. Really, really a testament to Finance Department and your administration, and of course, you as commissioners on, on really watching your spending and, and making sure you're making every dollar count. Alright, we're going to switch gears here a little bit. Tax revolving fund is another what we call major fund for the county. So we like to take a look at what is in total net position versus what's just being held in cash and investments year over year. And we would expect that net position is going to always exceed that cash and investment line. But you can see both of those have been trending upwards. So your net position is just shy of 8 million. So that's going to be all of the assets in that fund, less all of the liabilities in that fund. So primarily cash and investments and receivables for delinquent property taxes. Okay, and then the cash balance is about 5.5 million. And you want to have a healthy cash balance in that fund so that the treasurer doesn't have to turn around and borrow to buy back the delinquents when the treasurer settles on an annual basis. So having this cushion here allows for the county to not have to borrow. Alright, looking at your long-term obligations. I kind of broke out your main categories here for, starting with bonds. You'll notice that paydown is happening within governmental activities, and so you're just above 4 million. The majority of what's in bonds are the bonds that you took out to buy down the pension liability through MERS. Okay, so that wasn't like a construction bond, that was the pension bond, is the majority of, of what's in there. Minimal amounts really, and compensated absences, and then capital leases. And then related to payroll, we have the net pension liability and the other post-employment benefits or OPEB liability. So you'll see that for the year, the net pension liability did increase. And that seems to be the case most places. We still see that inching up a little bit year over year as they add each year's new amount of service cost to the calculation. But because the markets have been pretty strong, those assets then offset some of that liability so that your net amount doesn't increase as much. And then you'll notice in the OPEB column that there was a significant decrease from 2020, and the decrease there is related to changes in assumptions. So you'd have to kind of look through your actuary reports to see exactly what changed. One of the biggest pieces is that they were using like a 2% discount rate, but now that there are funds being invested and set aside for this, the discount rate changed to 7%, something, 7 point, I don't know, maybe 6% there. So that caused the decrease there. Questions on numbers before I get into compliance and internal controls?
Bond, if we make the regular payment, we're looking at about three years left on that bond. Chris probably know that answer.
Yeah, maybe four, five? Off, off the top of my head, I'm not sure what your payment is. But somewhere in there, yes.
I think it was a seven, wasn't it a seven year?
It was a 10-year bond.
It was a 10-year bond, okay.
It was a 10-year bond, and I think we've been paying on it about, what, five, five and a half years, Chris?
Yeah.
Our last payment will be 2026.
2026.
Getting halfway, at least halfway through there now. First, you know, you pay the thing off, pay off MERS, and then they change all your assumptions and your liability goes up anyways.
Have a better headline.
Yes, yeah.
Instead of them telling you the other day we need this much money by Friday. I don't know what we're looking at.
Yes. Definitely, the planning that was done was a positive thing. Alright, well, kind of switch gears here then and talk about compliance. So as part of the audit, we do the single audit, which is where we look more in-depth at the federal dollars that come in. This year, the major program we took a look at was coronavirus state and local fiscal, fiscal recovery funds. So there's several items within there that we have to check on expenditures and various compliance requirements. And I'm happy to say that there were no federal award findings related to that grant. Excellent job for new money coming in, you just never know what you're going to find. And honestly, for these dollars, as I'm sure you're aware, the bar keeps moving and things are constantly changing, so it is very challenging for finance directors to stay on top of some of these grants and know what's the right thing to do. Because the right thing today probably wasn't the right thing yesterday and might not be the right thing tomorrow. So really good job by the team here.
I think the best thing is we're not sending any money back.
Right. Yes, you should definitely come up with a plan. The money. Alright, we did have one internal control deficiency that we called a material weakness this year, and this relates to the delinquent tax revolving fund. And our issue with this is that there were several asset and liability accounts within this fund that were not properly reconciled at the end of the fiscal year. And because of that, there were material audit adjustments that were required to kind of get those numbers more in line with where they needed to be. So we worked extensively with the treasurer, who was really, really good to work with. We came and sat one-on-one a lot, going through amounts and a lot of paperwork to get these numbers where they needed to be. Whenever you have change in the treasurer's position, we don't always expect a seamless transition, right? Because sometimes those that are leaving are always cooperative and teaching people coming on board. And learning the treasurer's position is a lot of work. There are many different facets of the job, and it does take some time to learn all of what has to be done and learn all the areas that need to be reconciled, and then learn how to reconcile those. And I think some of the issue here this year was that a lot of the reconciliation, and even some of the initial posting of numbers within this fund were done by one person, and that person was solely relied on as kind of knowing what they were doing. They professed to kind of know what they were doing, but there wasn't someone overseeing that work. And so when we get to the end of the year, that person then was no longer here, and the accounts weren't reconciled. So this is definitely an area for improvement. I think that the treasurer learned a lot in our work, coming in, kind of working through things for year end. And so we would just encourage that additional training and saw out as applicable. And if there's any way that anyone in the Finance Department, if they have any time that they can dedicate to kind of looking at some of this, or even identifying just one person within the treasurer's office to kind of take the lead on some of this reconciling and really making that part of a monthly process, that would be our recommendation to kind of tighten up that area. This is one of those things that if this fund doesn't get reconciled on a monthly basis, it's very easy for it to get out of control. Just because so many transactions get posted, and it's so hard to remember some of the nuances of the transactions that happened in this fund several months down the road. It's a lot easier to, to maybe try to remember a few weeks ago or just a month ago versus, you know, sometimes several, you know, five, six, seven months later, if you wait to do the reconciling. So hoping that some internal controls and processes are looked at and improved in that area so that that's not an issue going forward. Questions on that one before?
So you're recommending that it be reconciled monthly?
Yes.
And then that there should be some continuing training? You think that would take care of things?
It's really not on our hands, though. It's really up to the treasurer to do that. We, we don't hire, fire, whatever, her department, we, anything like that, so.
Yep. Yep. Just, you know, so you're aware, because obviously what the treasurer works on gets rolled up into the financial statements. So. Okay. Alright, and then within the, yes, of the audit that you received will be a shorter PDF, not, not the large financial statement, but there's one that's called the governance letter. I'd just like to point out that this is required communication to, as a governing body. So it's important that you at least take a look through there. If you, you know, have any detailed questions, I'm happy to answer them tonight. I'm also happy to answer them anytime. Feel free to, to reach out to me. Within that letter, we did have some management comments this year. Some of these are repeats from previous years. I'm just going to touch on a couple of them. So the first one being the other audit adjustments. So in addition to the adjustments for the delinquent tax revolving fund, there were also, I think, 10 other audit adjustments that we posted, which the number isn't too significant. It's, you know, we would prefer that there's less than that. But the main issue within this comment relates to the, the library dollars that are collected and then the amounts that are paid out. And there were some issues with what got paid out. And it stems back to the, some of the City of Alma issues and the timing issues. And so we've been through that extensively with both Chris and with Terry, and kind of talked about ways to think about that before the payout happens here in the summer of 2022 so that hopefully we can resolve all the issues and kind of have a clean slate with that. But the City of Alma reconciling issues and collections that were a problem there one year really have now affected multiple years, and hopefully next year, I won't be up here saying we still have an issue. I think it should be resolved. Two other items, the deficit on assigned fund balance. There were three funds, the Recovery Court, front of the, front of the court, and the Brownfield that all had a deficit at the end of the year. Two of those, the Recovery Court and front of the court, will be covered by receipts that were collected outside of 60 days of the year-end, but were receivables. So that's kind of going to clear itself up, but we do have to report to you that there was a deficit out there, just so that you're aware. And then the Brownfield did not have those kind of deferred inflows to cover that. So at the end of the year, the Brownfield wasn't a deficit. And I'm guessing that probably the state reached out and Chris likely had to file a deficit elimination plan for that one potentially. And then the last item relates to investments. So we have to not only as a part of the numbers, but also in looking at some compliance, we have to look at investments. And we did notice this year that there were some general ledger accounts that are reporting investment dollars, but they're not being updated throughout the year. So they have the same balance as what they did during last year's audit. So we really need to make sure that those investment accounts are reconciled monthly or quarterly, depending on how the statements come in. But definitely, at least annually, they should be reconciled and updated. But we would prefer it to happen on the schedule when statements come in. The other thing we noted, kind of in looking at what those investments were in, is that very little market return in those investments, and I think perhaps one account even went below the principal amount for a while. I'm not sure if it came back after year-end or not. But something, you know, to, at least if you have knowledge of investments, something to maybe help the treasurer with, should she want some help in, in looking at that area to make sure that kind of gets cleaned up, and maybe if there's better options out there to be putting some of that money in to get the money put there. And then lastly, we did, a part of our testing is that we had to look at what gets reported to you as a board and does that line up with the records that we see. And we did note that on some of the month's investment reports that there were accounts listed that are no longer accounts of the county. Some of them had the wrong names for accounts, some of them hadn't been updated correctly for amounts. And so we just want to make sure that when those communications are coming to the board, that you're actually getting accurate information. So that'll be something that we will, we'll, we'll follow up on all of these in, in the subsequent audit. But we'll definitely follow up and make sure that what ends up getting reported to you is, in fact, what matches back to the documentation.
So when we get a report, we're just getting a report that says we, we, our Raymond James account or whatever it is rolled over to this account number, and we really don't know. You know, it's, it's, it's got $100,000 in it, and now it's still $100,000, or you know, you noticed that from last month or whatever. We're really, we're just getting that report, and so you're saying that that some of the names are not right, some of the accounts we need, normally even longer have. So how would we know to correct that? How, how would we know as a board to say, don't you have a different account, or didn't you buy a CD at Mercantile or, or over here? You know, I mean, how would we know that we're not getting that report right every month?
Right, so unfortunately, because the treasurer's position is elected, there's not always as many checks and balances over some of the work that happens there. The, the best control would be that someone else reviews that report prior to it coming to you for review. So that someone else, other than the person preparing it, can say, yep, saw these. So that someone else, other than the person preparing it, can say, yep, saw these four numbers on these four different financial statements. The institutions we're holding money with, these are their correct balances. We're good to go. Outside of doing something like that, we really are just relying on the work of one person.
Could we ask for the report from, I mean, if you buy a CD for a year, I mean, could we ask when we invested in that and said, here we've got the CD numbers such and such with one of the banks. We've invested $100,000. We knew as in a year, at least we'd have, you know, that that investment was in there. Or have a Raymond James account or we're doing something else and get a, if they get a quarterly report statement or mine come monthly, but if it had a quarterly report, we could get a copy of that.
Certainly.
Because we're just getting, I think we're just getting a line item thing that says we got this account or it's kind of typed out.
Yes. Yep. So just depending on what your policy says, and I don't know if there's a statute out there that, you know, would preclude you from getting that.
I think we would be entitled to that if you were telling us that's what it is, I guess.
I would, I would think you would be allowed to have that, yes, but.
Okay. Thanks.
The only investments that are available are FDIC insured investments, correct?
I do not know the answer to that off the top of my head.
Okay.
I don't, from memory, I don't remember which, what exact account your investments are in.
So you're saying that some of these investments are no longer there. Can we still check to find out when they were cashed in or when they were no longer?
I'm, yes, you could follow the paper trail. I don't have any issue with the balances that were reported in the audited statements. So I believe that the money is there and not missing. It's just that particular report you're getting is not correctly updated to give you the accurate information.
We may have had a CD turn out and they rolled it over to some other bank and we're still getting a copy of the CD from the first bank. Said we had money there.
It's not an issue where I'm saying money, money is missing. It's, it's a reporting accurate information issue.
I would think the bank would be more accurate on that. Like, for instance, we would be getting, like I get notices from my bank or my.
The treasurer does, but we're not getting you the right report here. And that's why I was asking about, could we have a copy when we bought a CD? So we bought a CD or we have a copy of some account that where our money is invested and say, here's our monthly update or if they update us quarterly or however they update. I don't know. But we could get a copy of that here and say, okay, here's where three months ago is worth 50 bucks and now it's worth 60. And it's in this account number. We have this much money. Yeah, I, I think that's something to think about.
I had a couple of things in your letter of March 22nd. You referred to a letter dated November 4th. Tell me what that is.
That's just the engagement letter. That's saying you're hiring us to.
Okay.
That's what that is.
Okay.
All the brownfield money that shows a deficit in it. Is that a timing issue from, it's a tax credit type of thing? How does that money come or how does that come to us?
Right. So you would receive the brownfield money from local units and then that gets paid back out for the brownfield projects. I don't know if it's a timing issue. The amount is, was not material, so it wasn't a material deficit. So we didn't keep digging. It is something that somebody should dig into and see, was there a missing payment at some point? Did a project get paid out too much? Sometimes what I see happen is money will end up in a different fund. So maybe part of a brownfield payment actually ended up in the general fund when it should have gone in the brownfield. That's just an example. I'm not saying that is what happened. Definitely someone needs to go back and look through those records and figure out, you know, is, is there something missing or was just too much paid on these projects and the money wasn't collected?
I'm kind of putting Chris on the spot, but I think he's going to address that in the finance tonight.
Okay.
Then I had one other question on page five dash two. Going here that a budget calls for Grashit Community Airport getting 26,000, which are only showing 13,000 paid with a 13,000 negative figure as not paid. Is that accurate?
So what that is saying is that there was 15,000 or there was 26,000 budgeted and only 13,000 was paid out.
Okay. Well, I have some further questions on that later on. Not with you.
Any other questions?
We got this office daily cash, some things straightened out. Were they, I mean, they're taking in some cash for permits out there?
That's a repeat comment this year. So no significant change was made from the time we made the comment in the prior audit. I think that's going to be somewhat of an issue because there's limited personnel within that department. But somebody should be doing some type of a double check to make sure that all the cash that comes in is making it to your bank account.
I have a question too. On page 53, substance abuse appropriation, it shows 50 dollars. Now it looks like it's 100,000, 58, or 100,780 dollars. Is that marijuana or is that the? Alcohol. I thought it was just alcohol.
I'm.
It used to be 50,000.
I'm not sure. Exactly in that line.
Okay, I can ask Chris on that.
That'd be a Chris question.
Pull up the detail and he'd be able.
Three years has been 50,000. So I was surprised to see it was over 100,000.
All right, back to this cash in the office or the permits office. So recently people have hired a permit, $300,000 and given them that. I guess, I think they print you like a receipt out of a computer system, out of our BSA or whatever that system is, don't they? I mean, I've bought some building permits and I know I got a permit, but I got paid it with a check bill, but I, they must print them. And Chris might know how that all works, but I guess we'll just try to figure that out, make sure some checks balances there somehow.
Yeah, I, I think it's looking at it from a monitoring standpoint. So persons collecting money, you know, doing the receipts, making sure the money is getting to the bank account or to the treasurer's office. Who is overseeing that work and how are they making sure that everything that came in really got accounted for? So.
Does that money go from the permits office to the treasurer's office and then you deposit it? So nobody makes deposits like outside. You make all the deposits. So they just bring you $1,000 for permit money. You put it under their account, I see. That's all I.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ellie.
Great. Thank you.
I'm assuming if anybody does have any further questions, they can get ahold of you. Next on the agenda, anyone like to make any public comment? Please come forward. The mics are up here if you could for our YouTube stuff.
Thank, okay to start. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Andrew Baer and I am a resident of the City of Alma. First of all, I want to thank the board for sharing the county ARP funds throughout Grashit County on several very meaningful projects. It was nice to hear about all the projects planned throughout the last meeting. As a resident of Alma, though, I was disappointed in seeing all the other municipalities that did not request funding for roads funded at 100% of their request. And the City of Alma, on the other hand, getting so little money in comparison to their size, in spite of the fact that Alma asked for less money per resident than was awarded to many municipalities. Alma is home to over 9,000 residents of Grashit, about a quarter of the Grashit population and serves as the business hub of the county for the remaining residents. Alma has enough residents to where two of the five commissioners here at least partially represents its residents. And that's changing to three of the five commissioners at this next election. In speaking with Alma residents throughout the last week, I found there's a lot of frustration that Alma's request was treated so differently than all the other municipalities. If the county received $8 million in ARP funds, that means 2 million of that amount was a direct result of the residents of Alma as the funds per county were based on population. While I greatly appreciate the $500,000 gifted to Alma for critical projects so far, because Alma serves so many people, this money just doesn't go as far as it might in Ithaca and Ridge. With over three times the population of Ithaca and presumably three times the number of lead pipes needing replacement, Alma received just a fraction of Ithaca's approved amount for lead pipes in spite of requesting more. Ithaca received their full half million dollars requested for pipe replacement plus an additional award of over $100,000, again, in spite of serving less than a third the residents of Alma. When you look at the allocation in terms of dollars spent per resident impacted, based on populations from 2019, Alma received $55.70 per person. This was the least amount received per person of any town, village, or city that requested funding, to my understanding. To put this in perspective, Ithaca received about four times as much money per person and more overall dollars. Breckenridge received about seven and a half times as much per person. Perrington received close to 12 times as much per person and Ashley received over 21 times as much per person or per resident. Alma was also the only municipality that did not make a request for roads and still only received a fraction of their request. Even if Alma had received the full one and a half million dollars as requested, they would have still received less money per person than other municipalities like Ithaca, Breckenridge, Perrington, and Ashley had already been awarded. Alma's request, given their very large population, was more than appropriate when compared to the requests from many other municipalities and dollars per resident. I greatly appreciated the idea that Commissioner Bunting put forward of attempting to fund all the municipality requests that were presented at the previous meeting. Again, every municipality request that didn't involve roads and was requested on time was 100% supported, except for Alma's. In spite of the fact that Alma requested fewer dollars per person than many of the other municipalities. We know that there are still one and a half million dollars available. I would advocate that this commission reconsider how many dollars they're holding on to and support Commissioner Bunting's idea to support all on-time municipality requests at 100%, which would mean simply supporting Alma in the same fair and equitable way that you did every other on-time municipality request. This topic's very important to me and the residents of Alma. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for addressing the commission and I do agree with you and the proposal that Commissioner Bunning made, you know, I came up with.
I would like to say too, that I felt we might not have had enough money with this money that was given to us from the federal, but we do have money from the wind turbines. And if you remember back in 2012, I went to all these meetings and the selling of the wind turbines was that this money that would come in from the wind turbines would go back into our community and take care of some of the problems, like the fire department was one of them. I mean, that is a big issue with me. I mean, just think about it. The fire truck comes to your house and something breaks down because the fire truck is 30 years old. We don't have enough money or we, we don't want to give enough money so they can fix all these fire engines. I had a problem with that and I still have a problem with that. So this is a new election. And maybe things will turn and I hope. I'm hearing a lot of complaints out there and have for a while about the money from the wind turbines. How did we, we were supposed to put it back into the community? And where and how have we done that? We haven't. So thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
What's your name again?
Andrew Baer, B-A-R-E. Yeah, if the opportunity arises to look at that 1.5 million that's being held right now, I would just hope that Alma's look to, because I don't think that it was equitable based on the population. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Once again, I agree with you. Okay. Any other public comment? Matt, you see anybody online?
Nope, we don't have anyone else.
Okay. Alrighty. Okay, next. Let's move on to that consent calendar. Anybody want to remove anything from the consent calendar? And I think we're looking for a motion to approve it.
Move to approve it.
Motion by Commissioner Lammern. We have a second. Support from Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. opposed, nay. Motion passed. Next. Tracy, it looks like you're up.
All right. Good evening, everyone. A few items worth mentioning attached to my report and as a part of your packet. There are some department reports that are attached for your review. Several of us attended the Township Association meeting last Thursday. I believe Commissioners Smith, Lammern, and Bailey were in attendance. It was a great discussion about the the tech center for which the military renewal is going to be coming before the voters this year. And the executing a wind turbine project. One of the supervisors was able to get some of his questions answered about what he might anticipate as he goes forward in developing turbines in in his township. Facilities projects. After a somewhat late start, we're pushing ahead with planned facilities projects. First priorities, and you've heard about these, are the health department building. Bid package is going to go out either Friday of this week or Monday of next week at last. The courthouse facade is a high priority item. Repair and painting of the rotunda and circuit courtroom ceiling. There's been some damage, water damage to that circuit courtroom ceiling that we've needed to get after for quite some time. And also we've developed a schedule of painting, a cyclical schedule, so that we are covering different areas of the building each fiscal year. Based on their need, we have all areas identified. We prioritize them based on need. So we're moving ahead with this year's priorities, painting. We would also like to get moving on the sheriff's request for venting devices. I believe the undersheriff mentioned something about that to you at the meeting two weeks ago. We do need to get that issue in front of you for approval. So I think you can be looking for that quite soon. The closing date for submitting proposals for our broadband project advisor closed at noon last Friday. We received, I believe, three proposals. I would like to work with a work group to review those and for getting recommendation in front of the board. And I'd like to suggest that Commissioner Lammern participate, also Commissioner Bailey. Commissioner Bailey was talking about broadband fairly early on here. Casey Zainer from Greater Grashit is always helpful and assisted me in putting together the request for qualifications. And Matt Hewitt for whatever technical advice and interpretation he could provide us. Again, that group would look at the, the proposal submitted to us and then we would submit a recommendation to the board. I also then would suggest that that group, along with a couple of others I have in mind, it would involve some folks from the community as well as commissioners. Work as a group to provide regular guidance to that project advisor. There would of course be regular reports to the full board as well. So I'm looking for your feedback on if you approve this approach, starting with the work group to review the proposals and to make recommendations to you. I am submitting that question.
Anyone have any objection to Commissioner Bailey and Commissioner Lammern working with that group?
Works for me.
I think you need a motion out of that.
I don't think we need a motion. I'll just make that appointment if that's fine. Okay.
Thank you very much.
And I did want to correct one other thing. I was at the. And I did want to correct one other thing. I was at that township meeting also.
I apologize. Yeah, what's worse?
Sit right beside you.
I was sitting right beside you, so that was, I do apologize. Golly.
Shared pizza with you, yeah.
I can't get away with anything, I'll tell you, but I do apologize, Chuck. Okay, with that, lots of other activity that are the subject of some of the upcoming agenda items. I do want to tell all of you what you know, but to point out for folks that might be viewing this meeting, right on the heels of the audit report, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into that from our financial administrator who is very capably aided by our accounting clerk, our procurement person, our COA financial person. Sheila in HR does work on that and then of course Terry. But these folks here are just sweating bullets for weeks to put all of that together and to assist the auditor. And of course, you can see the fruits of that labor over the years as they subsequently update and improve our financial processes. So, a big hats off to the folks here who have been involved in that. And our thanks, of course, to Commissioner Lammerman for his service as the financial, the commissioner, chair of the finance committee. So, with that, I will pause. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you, Tracy. Any questions? Okay, let's move on to Commissioner Committee reports. Commissioner Lammerman?
We're going to finally have an airport committee meeting tentatively scheduled for a week from Thursday. And the question that you had Chuck about the missing thirteen thousand?
Yes.
To me, that sounds like one of the municipalities did not pay what they agreed to.
I think our budget figure, twenty-six thousand.
Yeah, there's only two people that now pay on it.
All right, well, I
But I was gonna check that and find it.
I'll find out for sure what's going on with that. Other than that, I don't have any other report.
All right, thank you, John. Commissioner Bailey?
I had a COA meeting. They still continue to struggle with staffing. They've been looking for a cook for several months now. They had one. That person didn't work out. And so now they're down one again. And it's tough on them because they're short-staffed anyway. And if somebody misses, then people from the other parts of the COA have to go in there and help, you know. But they've served over twenty-five thousand meals so far this year.
Yeah, that's great.
So, they're doing a great job. I can't fault them for anything they do over there. Also, I attended a master plan meeting for the city of Ithaca on Monday, and that went well. I think we've got another, two more meetings and then that'll pull that master plan together. And this goes in conjunction with the county master plan and all gets rolled in. But I just was asked to be on that commission for them. Also serve on the real water, well protection. We had a meeting here a few weeks ago. And that's going very well too, so.
Thank you. Only thing I had, I attended the township meeting. And then I also attended the Seville Township meeting and they're bringing a proposal to us tonight. That's about it. Mr. Bunny?
Okay, I would like to share with you something that happened to me in the last ten days. Actually, most of you, those who come to the meetings, realize a few months ago I used to wear a bandage over my face and I had cancer on my face. And so during that time, I had to have some surgery done, but also I had some other complications. So, I decided to go to a specialist to make sure everything was just fine. When I went to the specialist, I found out that I had more cancer and that I was going to have to see a specialist. I found this out on a Thursday and on a Monday, they called and wanted to set me up with a specialist out of Ann Arbor. So, by Tuesday, I had already heard from the specialist and within a week, I was going to a specialist in Midland. I thought my surgery would be in Midland, but only to find out that I was going to have to go to Ann Arbor. The concerns were how fast this, when I found out I had cancer, excuse me, more cancer, I was concerned exactly how much it had spread. So, when I went to Ann Arbor, they were going to put dye in my lymph nodes. And I didn't know this till afterwards, after three hours of surgery and five hours of recovery, that I did not have any cancer in any of the lymph nodes and that they thought they had contained it. So, this coming Friday, I will find out exactly what stage it was and what treatments I'm going to have. But ten days ago, I didn't know if I was going to, well, eleven days ago, I did not know whether I'd be sitting here any longer. Because if it's stage three or four, I probably will have to give up my seat. But when I talked to them a couple of days ago, they felt that it was probably stage one or stage two and that I'll have to have minimum treatments on it. So, thanks to God. And the church I go to, they did a lot of praying for me. I'm back in the swing of being a commissioner. So, I wanted to share that with you. I kept it quiet because I did not, I wanted to focus on doing my work, having a job. I work at the school full-time. Have to take six weeks off at the school, but I did work yesterday. It was a really easy job. I just had to go and sit and tell the kids if they go to the bathroom or not. So, that was easy. But anyway, I have to take it easy for another five weeks. But anyway, I wanted to share that with you that I did tell Tracy there at the very end, because I thought she should know that there was a possibility I might not be able to finish the year out. But I can and I'm also going to still run as county commissioner. So, that's all I wanted to say. I didn't do any meetings. The meetings, I asked if I could come to this meeting and they said yes. Anything where I'm just sitting, I can't be running after kids. But I can come and sit down and I can't look more than ten pounds. Other than that, that was it.
Well, praise God. And I also want to thank Angie for running her down to Ann Arbor.
Yes, I'm sorry. My friend Angie, who was like my sister, insisted on going. And the first thing she said to the doctors was, I hope she didn't give you a lot of problems.
And of course, you're up and around doing a lot more than the doctor wants you to.
Yeah.
That's just Dan.
Yeah. One of the things I wanted to tell you is when I came out of recovery or out of, I was a long time trying to come back. I had absolutely no pain at all. And I have not had any pain so far. And that was one of the things that Angie, I told her, I said, I don't have any pains, when she wanted to give me some pain pills, but I didn't take, I don't, maybe one did I take?
One.
One pain pill. So, that is very good. I give the credit to God. So, anyway, so thank you to Angie again. I'm indebted to her for life.
Sam, you got a follow-up to that?
I just attended Narcissade and Fulton Township meeting. Basically, they're just working on getting their windmill project set up to get running. And I have a hearing tomorrow night on Wednesday. And then I think they're probably in Fulton Township, but they need another meeting to get it approved for township or to get it to. That's about it.
Alrighty. Okay. Next, we're moving on to new business and Keegan, is he online? Oh, there he is. You're sitting behind the sheriff. I didn't see you.
All right, so what I got today is the two thousand twenty-two equalization report. This year, I normally, in the past, I've just brought in the entire report and kind of went page by page with it, but this year I wanted to do something a little different, so I put together a presentation that will kind of summarize the report and get on all the key points in there and hopefully. I don't know if I can figure out how to change the slides here.
Keegan, there is a switch on the left-hand side of it, maybe on or off.
Yeah, the slide.
Okay. On your remote, left-hand side.
There we go. All right.
There we go.
All right, the first slide here is just our staff at the equalization department. We have Sandra Brubaker, who is our equalization clerk, Jamie Perez, who's our equalization appraiser, and me, the, again, our equalization director. So, before I get into the actual equalization report, I kind of wanted to just do a quick recap of this past year of some bigger things that happened in our office and the assessing community. First thing was our new staff members. We've got two new staff members. The first one is Sandra Brubaker. She is a Michigan certified assessing technician. She stepped into the role of our equalization clerk. She receives inputs, various deeds and sales documents into our equalization database. She maintains and updates that database with information from the assessors. She assists the public and assessors with questions on both assessing and equalization. And she assists me in the preparation of various reports and forms. Our second new staff member, Jamie Gutierrez, she is a Michigan certified assessing officer. And she stepped into the role of equalization appraiser, collects and verifies field data. She then takes that data and inputs that into our valuation software. She assists the public and assessors with questions, both on equalization and assessing. She assists with the data entry and she assists me in preparation of various reports and forms. And I'd just like to say I'm extremely happy with their work and I'm very happy to have them a part of our team. I think there have been great additions to our office. The two thousand twenty-one for two thousand twenty-two equalization studies. In the past, we have typically contracted out the commercial industrial equalization studies. And from my very first time starting in the office, my goal was to have those studies not contracted and have them all in the office. And this year with the assistance of Jamie and Sandy, we were able to complete all those studies in-house. And that saved us a total of seventeen thousand five hundred in contracting expenses this year. So, I was very happy to meet that goal this year. Some big changes that happened this year in the assessing world was the requirement of these KAMA data standards. Those are computer-assisted mass appraisal standards. And so, as of two thousand twenty-two, all assessors had to be in compliance with these new standards. And this included in the assessing databases, the unit codes, school codes, property classes, terms of sale, instruments of sale, and taxable status codes. So, previously before these codes were standardized, ever there was kind of a guide of what you should have in your database as far as property classes, unit codes, things like that. Nothing was required. So, across all the databases, you had all these different terms in there, all these different terms of sales, different property classes. And now all of that's gone. There's only certain classes you can use, certain codes you can use. So, earlier this year, we held a Zoom meeting with the assessors to help all of them switch over their databases from the codes they were using to the codes that are standardized by the state. And when we received all of our databases from the assessors this year, we did not have a single database out of compliance, so we were really happy with that. Another change this year was the introduction of the Michigan Equalization Gateway. So, this is a new online portal that is required by the state, used for submitting various reports and data. And this was a little bit of a challenge to get into place. A lot of assessors have done things a certain way for so long. It's tough to use a new system for submitting data. And it was kind of a complicated system, a complicated way to get the data into the system. But we were able to, after a short learning period, successfully navigate mega and submit all of our reports correctly and timely. And as well as the assessors, all of the assessors were able to get all their reports timely submitted to. All right, and moving into the equalization report. Page five of the report, these are the recommended county equalized values. The equalization department recommends Allen County equalized values. I won't read through all the big numbers, just the final total. The final total county equalized value is two billion, four hundred ninety-seven million, one hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars. And that is, I believe, a three point five percent increase from two thousand twenty-one.
I think I've asked you this before, but I can't remember your answer. So, if it's up three point five percent from two thousand twenty-one, should we expect a three and a half percent increase in millage, in millage revenue to the county?
Not necessarily. So, the county equalized value, what we do is we equalize by assessed value, which is fifty percent of the true cash value of the county. And then, but the taxes are based on the taxable value. And those are, they're close, but they don't always correlate because the issues with the taxable values are capped. So, basically, each year, your taxable value can only go up by the CPI, the rate of inflation or five percent, whichever lower, unless you, the property sells, has additions or new property or property is removed. So, let's say like you have a property worth a hundred thousand dollars. And with like today's market, values are going up and that gets increased to a hundred fifty thousand dollars is what your total value is. Your taxable value, if you haven't added any property to that, that's only going to increase by the rate of inflation. So, your hundred thousand dollars of taxable value is only going to go up a hundred, two thousand, three thousand dollars, something like that. Yep, so the the taxable value and the county equalized value doesn't always correlate. I believe the taxable value is one point six billion. I have it coming up here. And that increased by a little over one percent this year.
Just real quick, back to that page, the six hundred and two thousand personal property, what percentage of that is the wind turbines, would you say?
I would believe, I guess I don't know the exact number, but the majority of it, I think, is.
Past majority?
It's what?
The majority of it is the wind turbines. The wind turbines are huge.
Because there isn't any personal property for instance for manufacturing anymore. That type of stuff, right?
Yeah, yep, that is the eligible manufacturer personal property, phasing all of that into exempt, so.
Okay, thank you.
That's under a number though. That's under a certain number. I mean, other than a certain number of dollars, I mean. I thought it was like maybe a hundred eighty thousand dollars of equipment. If you were under that number, you were exempt or something, you couldn't file an exemption for it.
I know there is the small business personal property taxes. If you're under eighty thousand dollars, yep, you're completely exempt. And yeah, there's eligible manufacturing personal property. You just have to apply for that to be exempt.
But I think there's a cap in there. I mean, if you're over the cap, you gotta pay it either on the difference or whatever.
Okay.
But I think you're probably right. That is.
Yeah, I think it is a lot, mostly wind turbines.
Thank you.
So, pages six through eleven on the equalization report. This shows the two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two assessed and taxable values, along with the percent change from last year to this year. All property classes besides the industrial personal property had a positive total increases ranging from three all the way to ten percent. And the industrial property class decreased by eleven percent this year. And this is largely due to the depreciation of the wind turbines. Since they make up most of the industrial personal property, the depreciation does cut out a lot. And then Grash County's total taxable value increased by one point zero eight percent. And the assessed value increased by five, or three point five three percent. This is just a breakdown of the equalized values in the county. Most of the value is still primarily in agricultural class. This is the value trends, the equalized value, the taxable value and the personal property taxable value over, I believe, fourteen years. And this is the value trends in terms of tax dollars. So, the total taxable value of Grash County for two thousand twenty-two was one billion, six hundred eighty-one million, six hundred forty-eight thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars. And then that value equates to the following estimated millage revenue, which comes out to be a little over thirteen million dollars. And this is a increase of one point zero eight from the two thousand twenty-one estimated revenue. And this is a uh, increase of one point zero eight from the two thousand twenty-one estimated res- revenue. And uh, these estimates were taken from the millage rates that were approved last October. Uh, pages sixteen through thirty-four, this is all of the values broken down into each individual township, showing both the assessed and taxable values. Uh, largest growth we seen uh, the assessing units was the city of St. Louis in uh, eleven point three seven percent growth. And the largest decrease in value was North State Township at negative six point one six percent.
Any comment on that north shade?
Uh, yeah, I think that is uh, primarily due to the wind turbines as well.
Oh, depreciation?
Yep, I believe North State Township is the only township that uses the state recommended uh, depreciation scale instead of the Emmerich uh, depreciation scale, and that one depreciates at a much uh, higher rate. So I believe that's where that six percent mostly comes from. Said the new turbines, and then the first year it jumps quite a bit and uh, decreases depreciation.
That eleven percent increase in St. Louis, do you know what that's from?
Uh, mostly the residential class.
Residential?
Yep, yeah, the sale reports we were showing, we were showing that properties were selling for quite a bit higher than what uh, the assessor had them valued as, so they, that's why the value increased there. Uh, pages thirty-five through forty is the school district report. Uh, this is the taxable values of the entire county, broken down into each individual school district. And uh, the majority of the value comes from the school district, making up forty-eight point six two percent of the county's total taxable. And then the last pages of the report L forty twenty-four, uh, this is just another breakdown of the equalized values. Uh, but this is the report that uh, basically shows the state that uh, we completed county equalization, the signature or a part of the report that needs signatures.
Yeah, and you want a motion of approval on this, I'm assuming?
Uh, yep, and then uh, each page of this L forty twenty-four also requires a signature.
Yep. Any further questions?
Is all I have. I went through that a little fast, but.
Thank you, Keegan. Doing a fine job. Looks like we're looking for a motion to approve uh, me to sign that L forty twenty-four, which is all the motion, motion by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Bunting, uh, any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passed.
I appreciate it.
Yep, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, next, uh, Blight intergovernment agreement, uh, who's, Tracy, you're probably handling that, right?
I am, thank you. As I had reported to you previously, New Haven Township has asked to join our Blight eradication uh, effort this year. We memorialize these agreements with an intergovernmental agreement, and that is what is presented to you this evening for approval and signature by uh, by Commissioner Murphy. This is the same language as last year with just the adjustments in term of the agreement and um, uh, and the uh, the cost of participation. So just seeking your approval of this intergovernmental agreement for New Haven Township to join us in our Blight program.
Any questions on that? Do we need a motion to approve that agreement? Motion by Commissioner Bailey, second?
I'll stick it up.
Second by Commissioner Bunting? Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
You got something more for me to say?
We can just put your schedule tonight.
Okay.
Murphy, that'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, next we have uh, library board appointments. Angie, you filling us in on this?
So Kristy Omens has moved out of the district and Linda Gettleman, her term has expired and she does not want to reapply. So we put this in, add in the paper and the existing library board uh, mountain tried to recruit some people, so you've got four applications to choose from in front of you. For two positions. So, um.
Were there any recommendations from?
So Brian, um, one of the board members uh, recommended Nancy Gott. That was Kath- Kathy Lawson, um, recommended for Brian. I forgot his last name, who retired from the Alma Library. He recommend. Ding.
Yeah, buddy, that's right.
He recommended Randall, um. You understand that Maureen Murphy has just retired from a professor and um, is looking for places to volunteer as well. So Maureen would be a good hit.
So we have two recommendations. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we take the two recommendations from the board.
Which would be Nancy Gott and Randall Mead. You have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, my Commissioner Bunting, any discussion?
And which one full term and which one partial?
We leave that up to them.
Well, we probably gotta do it.
Who, who's the first name?
You put Nancy Gott first.
Then I would say full term for her and half time for the next one. That's the easiest way to do it. I have no idea who any of these people are.
Except that, as a second?
Yes.
Okay. Already, any discussion? Favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passed. And hopefully we inform the other two that we probably need positions in other places.
Have some boards written up, so?
Uh, we have District One and District Four, I believe, for Commission on Aging. So.
Let me check with them. Okay, we uh, deleted number four and uh, we're looking for uh, order to put the proposals on the ballot. You wanna explain that, Angie?
Okay, so um, we drew back when these were up for renewal in two thousand eighteen, I think it was. We actually had them and we drew them, but the um, the agricultural and economic development proposal, they have their literature already that shows that vote for proposal two. So they are asking that they actually be second place on the ballot. So you've got Commission on Aging and um, and who's the other one?
The library.
The library. Um, I believe that Commission on Aging was the last one in two thousand eighteen, and this, the library is new since I've been on the board, so I can't tell you what, how many turns it, how many years it was.
I would suggest that we put the Commission on Aging number one.
That was kind of my idea.
Agricultural and Economic, number two. And that leaves uh,
Library.
The library.
Number three. Any?
I can make a motion to that. That would be easier. I make a motion to that.
Uh, we need a second? Support by Commissioner Smith, any discussion? We do, we don't need real call, just make.
No.
Okay, uh, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed. Very good. So do we now have their literature good?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Sheila, you have a couple of issues here you're gonna handle?
I will uh, go ahead and take the first issue, which is the information technology position. Uh, and this is a, uh, an issue I'm frankly overdue in bringing uh, before this board. Uh, contrary to the uh, the way it is labeled on the agenda, and no fault of Angie's, I'm sure I told her that that's what it ought to be called, but this is not really a reclassification per se. That is, we're not wanting to change a position and bump it up to a higher level, but rather I'm seeking to move a current employee into another position and for you to authorize that position. And this, this is the, the story on this. Our IT project supervisor, that's Matt, um, has been working out of class for quite some time. Uh, this became most clear during the COVID lockdown. It became uh, quite clear when uh, from, you know, very soon after he started, quite frankly, we had so much work to do on our IT systems around uh, security, and that's of course job one with our IT services, but with security system updates and upgrades and so forth. And he's overseeing all of that, almost all of that. We had someone for about a year, but oh, back in two thousand nineteen, when we had the limited classification compensation study, that was of the executive class, as we refer to it, and the department heads. That was a study done by Mark Notley with municipal consulting services. I had asked him and I had included in the list of positions to have an IT director uh, position also evaluated for classification compensation purposes and uh, to write us a, a position description for that position. So the position description that Mark Notley put together is largely reproduced in the memorandum that um, is mostly, um, she was work. And um, uh, so you, you have that information in front of you, but in addition to the components of the position description, uh, we've listed the improvements, uh, system improvements uh, in our IT services. And that in the IT uh, security uh, for our, our county. So, um, and again, the, the classification competition recommendation is is arrived at, in doing this kind of work, whether it was Mark Notley in two thousand nineteen or what we will have coming up uh, soon, um, or uh, classification compensation studies anywhere, frankly, even when we prepare for union negotiations. What we do and what Mark Notley did is we looked at the rates of compensation for, in this case, IT department directors, um, uh, and uh, the numbers were uh, recommended to us. So and Sheila again has provided you the uh, monetary information uh, in the back. Uh, you can see that there is, of course, some uh, financial implications for this, because we're looking to uh, place um, um, our, the IT project supervisor into a department head a higher level position. So uh, I, I'm seeking your uh, approval to uh, create this and formally approve the IT director position and to authorize uh, placing uh, our current IT project supervisor uh, into the position that reflects the work that he is doing.
I have some questions for you. How much is he making now?
Um, let me find that. Um, and Sheila is going to help me with this. Sheila, do you have that range? I'm sorry, Commissioner, I mean, that's the most logical question in the world and um, I do not have that. Sheila?
Just a moment, I am working on getting it pulled up.
Okay, my goodness, I'm, I apologize.
Um, he is currently making twenty-six fifty-four.
That's uh, twenty-six dollars fifty-four cents an hour, and that is a project supervisor uh, wage, hourly wage.
How much is he making yearly, though?
Yeah, you're right.
Win the math. Fifty-five, fifty-five thousand two hundred and three dollars.
Okay.
At what step, at what step?
That is the fifth step.
Step five, again, project.
Is that step, step five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, what is the percentage of his raise? Can you tell me that? I don't have a, my, my calculator.
I, I don't know. It wouldn't be a raise. It's, again, he would be sitting in a new position. What would be, what is the difference between a project supervisor, step five and a um,
Director.
A director, step five, um, I don't know, can you do a percentage, Sheila? Again, this is, this is not a salary per se that we're discussing for a person, but rather a position issue. I'm sorry that I didn't have it up. The, the difference in, the difference in dollars is this twenty-six fifty-four uh, to thirty-nine fifty-five. That's on the last page of the memo- memorandum we provided you, Commissioner. So the uh, the total cost of this would be uh, ten thousand five hundred eight dollars for about half the year and twenty-six thousand increase between the two positions at step five for the full year. So we, we have that financial impact information again for you on the last page of the memorandum.
Well, we're gonna say is that he's at fifty-five thousand and he'll go to eighty-one thousand.
That's quite a job. Well, that's the difference between project supervisor and uh, director of uh, IT. These are positions we're talking about. Um, it's not a, I, I know it's a difficult distinction, but yes, there, there is no doubt an increase for, between a project supervisor and an IT director. The question of having employees classified correctly and working correctly.
Yeah, no, you mentioned a thirty-nine dollars an hour. The numbers I see is thirty-five sixteen?
I uh, I see a table at the end of the memorandum.
Yeah, thirty-five sixteen.
Twenty-six dollars and fifty-four cents. Sheila, make sure I'm looking at the right thing. Department head to grade five, step five, thirty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. You see where I'm, I'm looking, Commissioner Murphy?
Okay, all right, all right. Now I'm, I got it.
Okay, I have a couple more questions. At the end of our fiscal year, does he get the two percent or whatever we give? Does he get that raise also?
Uh, yes, everyone except contract employees get it. Everyone except contract employees.
I'm forgiving him a raise, but not that much. Not, not not twenty-six thousand twenty. Uh, I know he does a lot of work, but that's part of the job. And you kind of say a forty-hour job, you know, you're busy doing lots of things. Um, and does he get paid overtime when he does overtime?
No, we, we comp, we do comp time. Again, I can't impress enough that this isn't about the person. It's not about how busy he is. Uh, it's about the, the category and classification and complexity of the work that he does do, that the position does, and the knowledge that is required. And if we have an employee that's doing the work of a department head, uh, frankly, we've been saving some money by, if we have had him in the wrong position.
Let me ask you one other question then. You want to start this right now? One of the things that I'd like us to be doing is not giving raises throughout the year, but doing it starting in the fiscal year, October. Are you willing to wait till October to start this?
Commissioner, these decisions are entirely up to you. Um, I would suggest again that we're not, we're not giving it.
I mean, I agree with you. I agree with you because um, I'm always getting my computers and stuff fixed. It's very expensive. Take something in and it comes out, it's two hundred dollars. So I understand that they, that he's very, very knowledgeable and probably should have a raise. But also, I think the firemen should have money too, to fix their engines or their, in the fire department. I, I think that um, you know, it's pick and choose or it's um, priority. Um, we don't have money to help our community. We have money to give our tech guy twenty-six thousand dollars. And he well deserves it, but so does the fire department deserve money? So if they're coming out to your house for a fire, that their equipment doesn't break down. And that is a big issue. Six fire departments are using trucks over thirty years or equipment over thirty years that could break any time. It can't be fixed.
I know that we're having this discussion for another reason, Commissioner Bunting, that I, I will say, and this is the last thing I'll say about this. Have we not had this person working at the level of an IT director? Had we not had this person working at the level of an IT director when um, when we were subject to a COVID lockdown, this operation would have just stopped dead in its tracks. Instead, we were able to continue most work, most operations, much of it done remotely. So.
He works by himself, am I right?
No, he oversees the work of uh IT right. He um determines uh priorities, uh, uh work that is essential to maintain our systems. And he does oversee the work of the onsite IT right person uh that is here three days a week.
Well, at this point, I'd like to see how the other commissioners feel about it.
I'd like to move that we uh change uh Matt Hewitt's title to Director of Information Technology and go ahead with the scheduled salary.
And we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I support that.
Support by Commissioner Smith. Discussion.
When I first got here, we had two people doing this job, five, six years ago when I got here. I remember the pictures of that room. It looked like my office. Fires all over. Didn't know where nothing went. Um, it was a mess. I've been up there a couple times since he's been here. Um. I believe you're hiring a guy like this. Just think he has great qualifications. I think it, he fits in that position. And as I said, we paid two people to do this for a number of years and we still couldn't get the job done. And uh, he just makes this stuff work. I, I think we're fortunate to have him and uh that's why I support this. And when you're hiring somebody professional like this, they're not cheap. You know, you go to replace them, you might not get somebody for that price.
I agree with Sam. Um, I, 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 I've been in business for forty-five years and done a lot of other things. And I always have, I always think about the position. I don't pay the person, I pay the position. And this position requires somebody that is way above technical than any of us here and can make things run that you swear never would. It's seamless. When we were, when we were zooming, everything was seamless. When people had to leave the building, they've got to work remotely. There's just so many things that go into the IT of this county. And I agree with you, Sam. We're lucky to have him.
I think that, and I think, you know, you, you think about things that we've had happen. We had it where it shut down one time. And I think within fifteen minutes, maybe we were back up and running on a backup system. The county never missed a lick as for only maybe fifteen minutes. And we were running on some back server somewhere in the IT right place, or I don't even know where it's kept. But boom, they switched it over. I know during the COVID, uh, with my business, I needed a product out of this county for families. Uh, death certificates, something like that. We never missed a beat. There were the girls running that from home and uh, if somebody would run in to produce them, we'd pick them up in the front counter. Um, and I had counties we couldn't get it. We told families it would be a couple of hots. You know, and so this county did real well during COVID, I think, as far as getting marriage licenses business that people needed to take care of. And uh, and I think it was a tribute to this position that we have. We have the right guy in there now. And I think with this IT right company, it's uh, I think that position is well worth that money.
I guess another reason why I hesitate on some of this is the fact that we bought new software to put in the IT or to put in the computer, the county here. And in the policy, if you look that up online, our cell phone policy says that the county has the right to go into my personal iPad, my personal phone, my personal uh pictures, my text messages. Um, and they can record.
They have a right to go into this. This belongs to the county. They don't get into this.
It says in the thing, personal.
Now it.
Yes, it does.
We've already done that. We've already had that conversation.
Uh, look at it again. Well, I'm, I encourage you guys to pull it up. And uh, if you can't find it, get it on me. I'll give you a copy. I've given out a lot, fifty copies already. And um, well, I've given it to, it's right in there that they can look in our personal things. And I have nothing to hide, but I like to have, I like to talk to people without somebody uh taping it or listening in on it. So that's where I have a problem with some of this. But anyway.
So you think the county is looking at your personal phone and your business?
Well, I only, I got a paper that came to me saying that they were, that it said Janice Bunting, the date on it. It has a little thing clicked, um, personal data. I'd be glad to show you that paper. I could bring you one at the next meeting. I'll pass it out.
Okay, any further discussion?
Tracy, the only other question I have on this is uh the additional cost for the rest of the fiscal year will be ten thousand five hundred and eight forty, which can be covered with the use of ARP funds.
Well, it could be. It doesn't have to be. I mean, that's um, it's a suggestion for you. Uh, I, I'm not lobbying for that because I, I know that frankly tonight, you've got people sitting in the audience that would uh really benefit from, from that. So i- if you'd like to have it covered, the remainder of this fiscal year from ARP funds, that would be the amount. Uh, but the way that is covered, I, I leave to this board's discretion.
Will we put that in the motion that we would not use ARP funds?
Well, it's your motion. Uh, then that's a question I had. Were you making a motion that it was to start May first? I didn't hear anything about ARP funds from you.
I guess I'd like to, I'd like to do it that it does start May first and it's not going to use ARP funds.
It'll be paid for uh general fund then.
General fund, okay. And Sam, do you accept that? Okay. All righty, any further discussion?
Roll call.
You want to roll? Okay, roll call Angie.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes. Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
All righty, then we have another one. Um.
That one, we will be talking about the equalization director.
Okay, so Sheila, you're handling this.
I am.
All right.
So what we would like to do for the equalization is going to be similar to something that we did for the equalization department back in July. So we have instituted a two-tier classification scheme. Um, this came into play with Jamie because she came in and she had a level cer- a certification. Uh, and so we wanted to make sure that somebody that had the certification was um able to be moved up higher than somebody that came in without that certification. So for a little bit of a background, you, um, in order to work as an equalization director in the state of Michigan, somebody must have a level three, which is the Michigan Advanced Assessing Officer Certification. That is what is required to be a director. And that um, that certification allows for a certain amount of assessing value. If a person were to go do a level four, which is a Michigan Master Assessing Officer, that person can work anywhere in the state. They can assess with an unlimited um, a dollar amount, uh, value. Essentially, what we are asking for today is to have the two tiers for our, our equalization director position. So if a person were to come in with a level three, just as they have currently, they would be on a grade four. What we are asking is if a person, an equalization director, has the level four assessing certificate, that we are able to move them to a grade five. So we are not looking to hire a second person. It just gives us flexibility in what we are able to, which pay scale they're basically going to be on. In that, Keegan has com- completed the level four assessing, assessing certification. Um, and he joins only twenty-two other counties uh that have that level four certification. Um, so like I said previously, this will allow for some flexibility and retention of our current director or the ability to recruit um potential applicants in the future if he were to leave. Um, and so in that memo, it does also show the money um and the differences in what the cost would be if that change were to be moved.
The other piece of this and consistent with when we came to you and asked for the bifurcated system in our Department of Community Development, we want to encourage professional development and we value this. It is an organizational value. Um, and uh, we especially want to uh reward and recognize credentials that add value to the work of the unit, and it certainly does, does. Uh, to have a level four with the county uh is a pretty big deal, pretty big deal. It was quite a lot of work uh for him to attain that. So again, we're not looking for two directors, as Sheila indicated. Only this bifurcated system uh that will allow us to recognize and uh acknowledge uh with our wages, those that uh come at different levels of certification.
Any questions?
I guess I move that we approve the creation of the two-tier classification uh scheme for the equalization director position at grades four and five.
That motion, do we have a second?
I'll support that, but. That would automatically, because he's a four, would move him to a five, the way I read it.
It. I understand it. It moves him to a five when he completes the certification.
He's completed it. He's completed it.
Okay, so, yeah, so yes.
To factor in the advanced certification that has happened.
Correct, correct.
And could this be made retroactive to April one because he's had this certification for a few months at this point?
I'm probably. I'll support.
So you changed it to a April?
Yeah, to April, to April first.
April first.
And you accept? All right, any discussion? All those in favor, I?
I, you want a roll call?
Yes.
Okay, I guess we need a roll call.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Motion passed. Then we have a resolution on this uh deficit problem. It looks like, Chris, you're handling this?
Yep, that will be me. Um, as Ally mentioned, uh, there was uh a deficit that was ran in the Brownfield Development Fund, Fund Two-Four-Three, uh, it lasted fiscal year. The state did request a plan on how we would uh take care of that deficit. The deficit was nine thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars. Um, so I brought before you a resolution that it shows how we will resolve this in our current fiscal year. The reason that we ran a deficit in it, um, again, was related to uh transactions between the city of Elma and the county. Uh, when the city of Elma remitted the brownfield taxes that it collected to the county, uh, they were not identified or they did not get identified as brownfield, um, as a brownfield property. So it was actually deposited in the um delinquent tax fund. So in order to resolve this, we simply need to transfer nine thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars from the delinquent tax fund to the brownfield fund. And uh, this will, will be taken care of. But it is required by the state that we inform the board and the board passes a resolution so that the state knows you are aware of it.
So moved by Commissioner Smith, uh, support by Commissioner Bailey in this resolution two eighty-five. I think I got before me. Any discussion?
Just real quick, Chris, how do they tag that money when they send it to us? Are they supposed to say nine thousands for this and then the other rest of it is for something else for the general fund or?
Terry, could you answer that? You, you, these come directly to you.
That's, that's what they're supposed to do. They're supposed to identify where they go. And instead of that, the money they, they deposited it all as like animal money, like for uh county revealed the special state. And it all of that, so they didn't identify it.
And Terry, you've communicated that to them?
Yes, we, I have emails back and forth with Curtis, treasurer of the city of Elma. We, you know, we have had communication and that's what we gave up.
Good. All righty, any further discussion? And uh, all those in favor, I?
I.
Osnay. So we took care of that, one of the things from the audit. Right. Um, we're moving on to American Rescue Plan. There's a number of dollar figures here I have in the packet. Uh. You know who's handling this?
The first issue, I, I'm happy to handle, Commissioner Murphy. This is uh the county projects, county government projects. I really have a great deal to say about this, um, except that at the last meeting, I had presented to you a list of projects of for which cities, townships, villages were seeking ARP funds. Of course, you went through that uh process uh at your last meeting. I did not, because I know that you wanted to look at the list of projects that the other governmental units were presenting to you. I did not include the list of county projects. Uh, I was asked by a couple of you folks, whoever, to put together a comprehensive list so that you could have all of these projects in front of you, and that's what appears here. Um, although this afternoon I looked at it and realized I was missing another one. But i- in essence, this is what I have provided you. Um, I, I know that you have just, you know, just a limited amount uh now to, to distribute. Uh, but what I've given you is um, it's um uh over one point eight million dollars in projects. If I were to pare it down, uh, I would come up with just over a million dollars in projects. I could prioritize some, but I, I'm, whatever this board wants to do. If you would like to hear the other proposals uh from the, from uh uh, the uh townships this evening, that's fine. I just want to have this list of projects in front of you as requested so you have a, a broader uh picture of all of this. Uh, how, how would you like to proceed?
So this is basically informational.
Well, yes or no, however you might want to proceed. Um, I certainly, as I move forward with some of these, and we are moving ahead with some, I would like to be sure that, you know, we know they're going to be paid for one way or another. Um, uh, so I'm, I'm frankly not quite sure how to proceed. This is a pitch for ARP funding, but uh I know there is uh been quite a lot of discussion about what to do with uh the remaining ARP funds.
It should be paid for out of the county money through the wind turbine money, not through the ARP money. And also I think, why don't you present this to us at the time you want to do it? Like when you get estimates, bring those to us and let us look at them and make that decision then.
Well, to get, to get estimates though, I, I mean, getting estimates, somebody has to, a vendor has to, or a contractor or a company has to take the time uh to do that. And so we're a little bit careful about how we handle that. However, I will say that I haven't provided you estimates here in the column to the far right. So, uh, and in terms of used wind turbine money, I, that's a bit of a misnomer.
Well, let me say general fund. Why don't we do it? Uh, through general fund is what I'm saying, I guess. This should be coming out of general fund, not.
Yeah, isn't this mostly from our improvements budgets, our improvement plan?
We don't, well, some of it is from the capital improvement plan. Not all of these projects are on the capital improvement plan. Um, so it's that plus some, some additional projects that have come up over time. Because you recall that the capital improvement plan was put together really last summer and approved by you in late summer. Also, since that capital improvement uh came before you and was approved by you as a part of the budget, uh, we know that uh costs have just gone through the roof. So there are some larger uh estimates attached to some. we know that costs have just gone through the roof. So there are some larger estimates attached to some of these projects.
Like some of these, the one from the hotspot meal delivery truck, that's probably coming out of Commission on Aging, right?
Well, it could be, but I went to actually ask, you folks had asked me to do, I went back to all of the departments and asked, you know, what, what would they, what would help them in their operation and what would they like to ask of you? So the list you have there labeled COA is from that department.
Well, for me, I'd like to treat this as mostly informational. I mean, we've had a comment tonight from the city of Elma. We, we have some fire departments that are quite satisfied with us. We've got a couple of proposals, I believe, here tonight. So that's where I'm coming from.
I agree too.
Let me tell you what saddens me about this money, this ARP money. The last week, I've looked around at counties that got money. Ionia, my com got 12 million apiece, giving none of it to the townships, giving none of it away. Isabella's giving none of it away. Grashit County, Clinton County's looking at a new jail. Chiwasi County give $25,000 to each commissioner as a little tip.
And they had to give it back.
Had to give it back under the first rule, but today you wouldn't have to. Today you would not have to when they release the rules. Nobody, we, we made a decision to fix our stuff here and then give that money to townships and spread it out that could help the growth of Grashit County. It was a gift to us and it was a gift to them. It was a one-time gift from the federal government who, I have a whole other thought on why to give that to us, but if they give it to us, we took it. We thought we were doing the best with it. We could have kept that seven and a half million dollars right here. We weren't required to give it to anybody. And no other counties around here are doing that. And now we're catching flak from people. Now we didn't get enough. Now, I mean, I, I was here for a half hour afterwards of the last meeting saying, you know, you should have give, my project was more valuable than this project. You know, wasn't? I'm trying to explain when I drive by a corner and five years, I'm going to see some revenue there with buildings and stuff and, and gas stations are going to pay taxes here. You know, I, it was a gift. And maybe we made a mistake in deciding to give it away. You know, we should have kept it here and we could have kept it two, three years. You know, now that I look back on it, maybe we made a mistake by doing that. I don't know. I'm happy we did it, but people don't understand this was just a gift. We could, we, we would have had a lot of money to have to do all these projects right here. We probably could have put $5 million into our stuff and kept a couple million bucks back for two and a half, three years before we got to do something with it. And I'm sure we'd have found something in two or three, two, three years to do something with it. I just think we got to fix stuff that the county owns, that everybody owns here. We got to fix roofs. We got to fix that stuff here. And I think that stuff has to be taken care of. And whatever's left, we can do whatever you want with it. But that was a gift and there's nobody else handing it out like we did. Nobody around here that I've found. I mean, I've checked 10 counties surrounding us and they're keeping it.
Well, you're right. That was a gift to the county, but the wind turbine money was not a gift to the county. That wind turbine money was supposed to.
And you talk like we've got a bank account with $40 million in it with wind turbine money. That's not the case. That money's been used for the last 15 years to operate this county. When you, when you go, when you go back through those slow times, bad times, you were lucky to have that wind turbine money. I wasn't. But, but you used it and you spent it.
But we, it was sold to the public that the money.
But you did use it. You, you didn't, you spent it on county projects and stuff. I mean, you kept the county afloat on it a few years. You were laying people, you told the story about laying somebody off.
That's true.
She had to go home and go to work, couldn't work here no more or something. But that wind turbine money kept this county afloat. It's not like we got $40 million in the bank, like you tried to reiterate a couple of weeks ago, sitting there that we can just dip into that well. We don't have that well.
We are sitting on enough money right now that we could take a couple of million dollars and put it back into this community. And I got to tell you something that would make a big difference in the whole community to fix some of the things that are a lot, like fire trucks.
I think, I think it's, I think it's irresponsible to take taxpayer dollars and just spread it out into the community.
But it wasn't taxpayer's money. It was.
This, this money here is income that comes to the county over the years. I think by this ARP money, it was a gift. And, and, and we decided to give it away. And, and we're the only county around here that's done that. They're all keeping it. Isn't that right Chuck? I mean, I'm sure you know that too by being in Midland County, being involved with what you're involved with. But there, there's, nobody else did like we've done that I can find. And, and now we're bad guys because we didn't give somebody this money or that money or whatever. I mean, there, we had people want, we had $12 million. I think the last half year, 12, 13 million dollars people wanted. We got seven. And we tried to get stuff fixed here. And this is not my building. This is everybody's building. And the, the health department, I couldn't believe the windows were falling out of the building. And you drive by, it looks pretty good from the road, won't by 50 mile an hour, but the windows are coming. You know, and I don't know how long it's been there, but we fixed it. We got the gift. We, we're fixing it, you know, and I don't know, it's just, it, it, we don't have $40 million like you stated last week in window money.
I never said $40 million. 14 million dollars, not 40, 14. For the wind turbine money. Well, I'm, I'm more than happy, I passed that paper out to all of yous. I've also had phone calls where I've sent copies to people because it's right on that paper. In fact, I don't have it with me. But I went over today to Greater Grashit to find out how much more money has come in from the wind turbines. And also I talked to DTE back, oh, probably five, six years ago. The county were, out of every 125 wind turbines that are put up in the county of Grashit, $8.3 million will come into the county. That is the county, what you're going to make over, it was supposed to be 15 years. And so that money has been coming in, but a little bit here and there would have helped. We shouldn't have to spend it all in one day, no. But we should have been helping some of these areas as time has been going on. But Kelly, you were back then. I went to Breckenridge to the school meetings when they had it about the wind turbines. And again, it was sold to the people that, actually they talked, talked about putting a sports complex into Grashit County and everybody could use, but the money that was going to be made off the wind turbines. None of that was ever done. Nothing has been done. And you're right, at the beginning, we were hurting financially. But I'm on this board 22 years now. And so I know the beginning and I know where we're at today. Versus somebody that walks in here two years ago, or a year ago, or four years ago. It's all about educating and, and, and you can go back in the books, go back in the minutes. There are all, all the minutes there should be online about what was going on at that time.
Mr. Bonting, when you visited Greater Grashit today, were they also able to give you the windmill dollars that have gone to schools?
Yes, they did. Yes.
So, so.
Disciplines, municipalities, and to the county. And also they gave me sheets on the new wind turbines that just came in. How much money is going to come in from those? A lot of money is pouring into this county. I mean, why would we put wind turbines on our, on our, in our county if we're not going to benefit everybody?
Well, right. And, and I just, I just want to make sure that you, you, and that folks understand that it's not all coming and sitting in a pot here in, in Grashit County, that this gets distributed to schools and all the taxing, the district.
The money that comes in, it tells you on this paper, how much went to schools, how much goes to municipalities.
That is correct. That is correct. Several copies are actually on the stand right behind Commissioner Murphy as of 2019. I don't have the updated version. I just, I just think, I just want folks to know that county doesn't take all this money. It gets taken in and then it's distributed to, to the schools and to.
I think it was $156 million has already come into our county, which has gone to the schools.
Yeah, and it's gone to the schools, the Wheeler Township, the fire and rescue out in Wheeler Township, roads and bridges for Lafayette Township in the past.
That's not on there. The only thing that's on there.
No, it's all right here.
Goes to the road commission, yeah.
Which of course, all the group has provided a number of times. So that's all I need to say. I just want to make sure the public understands that that's not all coming to Grashit County.
They're waiting for one more township to come in and they'll have the paper done for last year. But they have them out every year. I have last year's, which is 2021. So it's a more current one than 2019. It's out every year. You get a new one.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
So, any action here? Should we move on to the other two items?
I'd like to see us move on.
Question to that? All right, why don't we, I have Wheeler Township next on the list with a sewer station. See anything? Is anyone here from Wheeler Township or online?
Someone, one of the engineers.
Okay. Okay, could you come forward to the? I'm sorry, it's just the, the, the mic won't pick you up. Sorry.
Chuck, you did have a lot.
I get it from soon now.
As of right now, I do not have anything from the engineering of, to update our sewer system. It was put in in 2009. And this is, you know, we just want to update it before it wears out and then it's going to be quite costly for us to.
We're asking for about $250,000.
$250,000. He said it might be a little bit more than that, but we have some money in your ARP money and also just general fund money that after we get the turbine settled that was to pay the extra cost or whatever.
So that's requesting $250,000.
For sewer upgrade.
Sewer station upgrade.
Station update.
I'll make a motion. Are we doing it now or are we, you people are here. There's three?
There's no, just two.
Just two?
Yeah.
I was thinking there was another person too. Okay, I should motion that we give $250,000 to Wheeler Township for update, upgrade on their sewer station, right?
Correct.
Their request.
I'll support that.
And we have a second? ARP funds?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Then I think we should have a roll call. Yep.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Civil Township. If someone could come to the podium, it picks you up, or all of you, or who's ever here.
Fingers at one another.
Might as well come as a committee.
Bringing it together.
Alrighty, maybe introduce yourself first and I know y'all, but.
My name's Ashley Gibson-Smith. I'm the treasurer for Civil Township.
Tish Mallory, I am the supervisor for Civil Township.
And I'm Jennifer Balcom and I am the clerk for Civil Township.
So we're requesting funds. Our project that we're looking at, putting our ARP money in and our additional general fund and fire mileage money would be looking and doing a new township hall and it would be kind of a complex type facility where we would have a new township hall and then there would be a fire station there because of our location from Elma, how far out we are to get that need to our people. So when we were looking at the funds, we, kind of like you guys, how are we going to hit the most people? And we have a huge need with our township hall. I don't know how many people have been there. We operate out of an old church.
125 years old.
Yes. I mean, it has its historical nostalgic value. I mean, some people went to church there when they were young. And it has converted now into our township hall. Our offices are in the basement. So when people come have tax questions, you got to bring everything upstairs for that. We're having efficiency issues with just keeping it heated correctly. We have a lot of into it just to get it updated. People coming into the building, yes, we have a ramp, but it's old, it's slippery. So when we have elections, we've had people fall down the stairs. It's just, there's just a lot of issues there. So and looking at something that would meet our community's needs, this is where we thought the funds would go best.
Did I hear right too that somebody's offered to donate some fire trucks to you?
No, there's no donation of fire trucks, but we are working, of course, in collaboration with Fire District. We've been working on this as a fire board. There are four townships involved also with the city of Elma. We, there are, they don't have enough room at their hall. They had attempted to try to build something right near the city hall, but of course it's in a flood zone, so that can't be done. Another piece of property was offered to them, but then it ended up not working out. So we just kind of ran with it. I mean, we, we are the only part of the county that is not protected by fire. We have Richland, quite often Richland Township can get there or Shepherd or Lincoln Township before Elma can get there. I mean, Elma's doing their best to try to speed up times, but we have 17 miles between Half Moon Lake and the city of Elma. So.
The Civil Township Library Board members actually lost a barn. Is that correct? She lives out by Half Moon Lake and they just could not get there in time.
So we've been working with them as far as, because they need room. Our Sumner Civil Rescue, which is, I think it's been renamed, but we have a rescue unit which we bought a new truck for. Currently we're housing it in the Elwell Park building, but it's really not a very large facility to move around the truck inside of the building. It's a very tiny garage. So, so we have that truck and then they have a couple of trucks that they don't have space for and it's inconvenient for them to shuffle, so to speak, because they've got the ATV in there and with us having the rail trails out there, they do use that quite frequently. So we're just trying to get the ball rolling on this so we can, but there is money set aside from the fire department. We have money set aside for the Sumner Civil Rescue because they were going to build a building on our park property, but it just makes sense to try to collaborate and do it all together and also provide a hall on a, you know, in a more convenient way for our residents.
And being on M46, you guys have an awful lot of rescue calls.
Yes, we do.
We have the most out of the collaboration between us, Pine River, Arcade and Sumner.
So it makes sense to, to do this, doesn't it?
And I, I had heard that response time on a fire is parts of your township is like 23 minutes?
It can be. Farthest parts.
That was the library board member. That was the person who had the fire who spoke at that, at the meeting. Yes. That lives by Half Moon Lake.
But helps with insurance, for homeowners insurance for the numbers out there. We're at the max right now. And if you're within a five mile radius and the sites that I'm working on as far as, you know, location, five miles would go, would work for all the four of us. That way they're protected. I mean, you have, Arcade is also with Ithaca, so that covers a lot of their, you know, southern parts of their. And but as far as us, we're just, Sumner and Seville are kind of just out there.
Where are you going to put this building out? Where is that going to be?
I don't have a definite location yet and I'm, you know, I'm not trying to be evasive about it, but you know, if somebody knows that it might be available, you know.
She's speaking like a real.
Yeah, I'm speaking like a real estate, yeah, realtor.
If you can get the money, then probably, you know, you can advertise that in your community. Somebody might donate property to you, like the farmer or somebody.
They probably don't let us say where they're looking at.
It's in a very good location. We're looking in a centralized area. Actually, last week, three of us went and toured the St. Louis facility. And that's very nice. Of course, that's very upscale for what we would require. We were thinking maybe two bays and then have our hall attached to it. But that way we'd have, they'd have an extra truck out there. They said maybe even a water truck out there and like the side by side. the, um, side by side for the brush fires or if there's any kind of emergency on the rail trail.
And then by having them together, um, we can utilize the same facilities for different things. We'd have the conference room because I know Sumner Seville Rescue, when they were talking about a building, they would like a conference room. Um, so we can both use those type of things. So that's all in one central location instead of having player hall and then them needing, you know, the conference hall and the bathrooms and all of that and us having a, a township hall, we can, we can collaborate together.
And we did have one piece of property that, um, we're leaning toward, but then after touring that and the generator and maybe using it also as a safe haven in case of something disastrous, like a tornado or something like that, where somebody needed to get in there. We now know that natural gas is very important, so we had to push the line back just a little bit because it's kind of hit and miss. Yeah, so.
You were asking for, was it $300,000? Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, um, present $300,000 to Seville for a new building.
From ARP funds?
ARP.
We have a second?
I'll support.
Second by Commissioner Bailey. Any further discussion?
I just have to say, I think I have to vote no again. And it's not that I would be saying never. But just, I feel like we don't know enough right now. I didn't know that we had rescinded the million and a half reserve that we told the line on so carefully last time. So I wouldn't be saying never. For right now, I'd have to say no.
Any further discussion? And you call a roll?
Commissioner Lumberman?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. All right, um, that, um, that the wind turbine litigation report, uh, Tracy, you're going to handle that or?
I, I am. At last I could speak in detail with you about the negotiations that have been going on for a number of months now with DTE. Um, the, and, and there are a number of materials in your packet, documents for you to review to help you, uh, fall asleep at night. Of those documents, because it's pretty thick reading, uh, I would point you to the multiplier table and the agreement bullet points. But by way of, uh, review, the, uh, Michigan Renewable Energy Collaborative, MREC, and its executive board have been negotiating for a number of months. I think last August or September, uh, with officials at, uh, DTE in an attempt to resolve, uh, over a decade of dispute and litigation about the appropriate rates of taxation on our, on our wind turbines. Um, uh, DTE did finally approach us, um, uh, about negotiating. They've negotiated in good faith and we appreciate that a great deal. I've pulled out some things, uh, that I think these are the terms that you care the most about. Or, um, there's a great deal of technical, uh, information and detail in this agreement that is not uh, my specialty or understanding, but there, the terms I think you carry the most about are as follows. First, DTE, as we know, has claimed that, um, the taxing districts owe refunds of millions of dollars, uh, for overpayment of taxes. That's, uh, DTE's claim that they have, um, they've overpaid taxes based upon the table, the depreciation table that has been in use for them. Uh, of the, uh, millions of dollars that DTE is claiming, uh, it is owed, they have agreed to, um, waive 90%. So the districts are required only to pay 10%. Uh, we pretty much agree on the numbers. What's happening now is just the final calculations and making sure that everyone agrees on the numbers of what those kind, what that 10% would be. A pretty big deal. But in addition to that, for the smaller districts that might find it difficult to pay back even nominal amounts of, of, uh, money, uh, each, uh, township district is being given three years, uh, free of, uh, interest or penalties to pay that, uh, that agreed amount, uh, in full. So a three-year payment plan if they need it. I, I really believe that just about everybody's going to be able to pay that with, uh, one quick check. Also very significant is that we held on to a 30-year depreciation schedule. And we don't hit the bottom, the point three or 30% until year 15. There were some schedules that were being promoted that had us, uh, leveling out at that 30% at year seven and year 10. Respect to our guns and, um, uh, DTE has agreed, uh, to work with a table that has us hitting 30% by year 15. And, uh, then continues that 30% for third, uh, until the remainder of the life of the turbine, which has been set at 30 years. You can look at the multiplier table and, and see the details of that. We are not, uh, DTE wanted us to, uh, withdraw or work to withdraw the bills that have been introduced in the House and the Senate. Uh, we have, uh, been adamant that we are not going to do that, uh, because we still have Consumers Energy and Exelon here in Grasset County. And, um, have these same disputes with, uh, Consumers Energy and Exelon. And perhaps there'll need to be a legislative, uh, solution. What we, so we're not agreeing to withdraw those bills. But we are agreeing that we will not lobby or advocate for, um, a table that is different than what is, uh,
Yeah.
this agreement that we have struck, uh, with DTE. So, um, the steps from here and Grasset's numbers have been calculated. I presented those to you in the past, actually. Um, I will present the fresh numbers once they've been calculated, but remember this litigation, the named parties are the townships because the assessments were done there. And, um, uh, so we're also working out the mechanics. We certainly benefited through the flow of the tax dollars, but, um, the wind turbines are located in townships, so they have, uh, been, been named parties. But the steps from here, um, of each township that is subject to litigation, uh, must approve the agreement. And in fact, that process is starting now. Um, our attorneys and, um, our technical experts have had a couple of Zoom meetings with assessors already to explain, how all of this, uh, would, would work. They're doing assessor speak, which I do not speak. Um, but they're aware of this. This is now going to township boards, uh, for approval. Um, there will be a press release, a mutual press release issued by the MREC and DTE announcing the agreement, um, and I'm sure praising the, the collaboration and the willingness to negotiating with them. Also, the MREC has agreed to support DT, DTE in any issue that might go before the Public Service Commission at which the reasonableness of this agreement might be at issue. So in other words, we would help them to discuss and even defend if necessary, uh, the terms of this agreement. Uh, we are going to meet together with the State Tax Commission and certainly, um, hope strongly advocate for the tax, State Tax Commission, uh, to adopt this table. I, I will hold my remaining comments about the State Tax Commission and their role. Uh, but if the State Tax Commission were to do that, that then this table would apply to all wind turbines, all, uh, those, um, uh, in, uh, townships that opted not to join the MREC or became involved in all of this later. Because this agreement is simply between MREC members, MREC townships, uh, and DTE. But State Tax Commission's cooperation, uh, would help this, uh, to be clarified and consistent statewide. And then finally, the tax tribunal must enter a consent judgment and agree to dismiss all pending cases. And the agreement is with DTE that this agreement would resolve all of the cases that have been filed, uh, for all of the wind parks that have been, uh, subject to litigation. So that's where things are. As I say, some of the, um, uh, dots are being placed on the settlement agreement, but it is at this stage and, uh, we're able to talk about it now. Uh, very pleased again with the terms of this. We think it's a a good sol- solution. Uh, of course, we, uh, need, uh, Consumers Energy to work with us and Exelon to work with us so that we can solve the remaining pieces of this puzzle. So this is, uh, information only, uh, presentation to you this evening. Uh, there is no action for this board to take. Uh, I can answer process questions. If there are technical questions, I'll need to take notes.
All righty, thank you, Tracy. This is very, very good news. Uh, congratulations, great work. We, we also have to give a big thing to, uh, thanks to Representative Pat Outman, who handled the legislative fight on this and the leadership on that and sponsored the bills and got them in, which was a key part of this also.
And continues to do so. And I just may add, Chuck, uh, an additional component of Representative Outman's work was to help find cosponsors for the bill. And again, uh, you know, there, there's a bill on the Senate side, but really, uh, Representative Outman, uh, has just done great work for us on the House side. So certainly worth the attention.
And unfortunately with redistricting, he's moving his district to the west, but.
I would also like to thank Wheeler Township, who, uh, Mr. Rose has, Jerry Rhodes was, um, uh, represented all of Grasset County on this and went to all the meetings from, right from day one.
Tracy, the, the, our new windmills that are coming online, um, what depreciation schedule are they going to be on?
Um, well, they're going to have to argue about that. Um, the AE table is out there as we've been discussing. Uh, it could be that they would just agree to, uh, go with the, uh, STC table. The comparison multiplier tables that, uh, is in your packet, uh, does not include all of the tables that have been discussed over time. It does not include the table that was in effect at the time that the first wind turbines, uh, came online here in Grasset County, but uh, it could be that they will just agree to, um, uh, adhere to the STC table. They perhaps have not wanted to join this fight. Uh, my comment to them is that's a perfectly fine choice, but they are potentially, um, um, shorting themselves in the tax collections. Again, if we can get the State Tax Commission to approve this thing, um, and adopt the, uh, the settlement table, then that should dictate. But we've got these projects coming on in all sorts of places. You know, uh, Isabella County has a big development. So, you, for this to, uh, address everyone's needs and situations, there's more work yet, but the, uh, the MREC group is, uh, is covered for now.
Paragraph three here, it says for tax years 2023 to 2036, townships must utilize the settlement wind multiplier table applied to DTE's original cost reported pursuant to instructions on Form 4565. Does that mean that for going forward that what they were demanding in the first place, we're going to kind of revert to what they were demanding in the first place going forward, starting in 2023?
Well, I suspect, um, no, that, that is just, uh, uh, technical language that indicates that this new wind multiplier table will be applied and that it applies for the 2333. Uh, but for this period of time, uh, we're getting into, to technical things here in the Form 4565 is important. I don't recall what it is or what it does. But again, this and any other provision, uh, applies only to DTE projects. So those that projects, uh, done by consumers, this does not apply.
All the stuff on the south side of the county is just put in and it stops and brings in maybe consumers.
Correct. So I, I would suggest that those folks would, you know, have quite an interest in sitting down with, with consumers and, uh, having us sit down with consumers. But again, unless we have the State Tax Commission involved, uh, their, their projects, because they're not MREC members, their projects, uh, might not be covered by an agreement, but this can't hurt them. This can't hurt them. Even if they're not directly involved because of the work that we'll do with State Tax Commission, Tax Tribunal and so forth, Public Service.
Okay, any other questions? All righty, um, I know Jan, you mentioned you might need a recess before we go.
No, I'm good. I'll be okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All righty, then I'll entertain a motion, uh, uh, to go into the finance meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner.
We have to come out of this meeting first?
Yes, that's what the motion would be. To come out of this meeting and go into the finance meeting. Uh, we have a second? Second by Commissioner Lumberman. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion.
All righty, um, I'll just go ahead and turn it over to you.
All right, did you, uh, want to go ahead and to the directors' report or did you want to address some of the questions, uh, that came up during the audit presentation?
Let's do some of the questions from the audit presentation.
All right, um, I'll address the two that I remember. One of them related to, um, the appropriation to the airport authority. Each year we approve, uh, contribution of $26,000 to the airport.
Right.
And last year, uh, we paid $13,000 of that $26,000. And the reason for that is uh, the airport authority has to bill us for that money. And they didn't bill us for $26,000.
You know, okay, good. Well, I was concerned we were being a deadbeat, so we got to get them to send us a bill.
You know, in fact, I think they only billed us for $1,300 and we called and asked if they meant $13,000 and they said yes. So and we did not get a second bill, which we normally do.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the second question, Commissioner Bunting asked about the substance abuse appropriation. The budget was $50,000 and then it, uh, the actual ended up being like, oh, $74,000. Um, the reason for that, and, and this has been brought up a couple of times throughout the year, is that during, uh, 2020, this nonprofit actually shut down and they didn't bill us for a couple of quarters in 2020. So they then billed us for that in 2021, which is why our expenditures were higher than what we expected. But if we went back to 2020, we didn't give them as much as we had budgeted or we didn't pay them as much as we budgeted.
And that is, that's the company in Lansing?
I do not recall. Um, I'd have to look that up, but, um, I think that is correct, the, the company in Lansing.
And they're still there, right?
Yes, correct. And, uh, without further questions, would you like me to move into the director's report?
I have a few questions in this, yes. I guess I'm, I'm looking to, when you look at the delinquent tax, um, preparedness, uh, things they need at the end of the year or whatever. And he, she recommended doing it monthly. Where are we at with that? I mean, we have, you have a plan in place or you, you guys have a plan in place to do that?
Yes, we're working on, you know, getting caught up right now and we are doing it.
So we get a caught up and we'll get it, have it. So we get it caught up, we'll get it, have it monthly and somebody oversee it like she suggested? Okay. Um investments, I guess it really, you know, when you when you. When you're. Get a deficiency or whatever about the investments and, you know, we're not looking at the right report and we were. We think we got money in this account and it's a different account, I mean, I guess somehow I'd like to see. You if you go buy a CD at a bank, just say, make a copy of it, whatever, they bring it to us. That way there we could, if we wanted to keep track of it or whatever, we know, we got money in Raymond James, or we got money wherever you're putting it. We'd have something from them to say this month was worth a hundred grand, today it's five grand. Um I think those numbers would be truer if we if we could see a copy of that, that wouldn't be a big deal.
Yeah, um I have to say, investments are complicated. In my opinion, um and when I came in. Some of it is sent to me in a quarterly. Paper and some of it was online, some of it's done online, so I had to acquire a password and then I just. That for one of the investment groups that we deal with, so that took a little bit of time and. And it just needed to get me to figure out what's going on and find out exactly how I could get into that group after I figured out who that was.
But the use, I think, use. That much with anymore.
So that's I followed what what was already there until I figured out where it really was. I think it's the reports that were already being given to you prior.
So do you do you investment adjust every, or do they invest, do they adjust every quarter?
Some, it depends on who they are, it depends on who they are, there's in two investment groups that we have that handle like lots. Money markets, things like that, and they uh report. One of the words monthly and the other reports quarter.
So are we, so CDs, we're not actually going out and buy, I thought we were buying some from local banks, are we too?
We do, we do that some, yeah.
Go do that, so like we're using, I think it was, it seemed like it was Raymond James or something, it wasn't one of those. So we're just giving them money and they invest it for us someplace?
These investment groups, they always ask for, they ask you what you want to do with it, they ask you. But they let me know, okay, this is coming up, this has um matured and then you have to make a decision on it.
Terry, whereabouts is Raymond James are we dealing with? Okay, so the Raymond James that we deal with, you do that over the phone with Raymond James or?
Corporate office, it's a corporate office, it's not like a local bank on the street.
It's an investment.
I I guess I look at it, Terry, when they say that, we had some investments that were backwards. Maybe I had a quote that, maybe I have one of them, you know, but I just think if I saw something from them and and we had a hundred grand in here today and we got ninety next month. I'd say what happened here, maybe, I would hope I would. Um I look at my stuff like that, so I somehow I'd like to see that. Uh you know, it it it's just a copy of it, I mean, nothing formal, you know, we got, we got ten people we're doing business with, I don't know how you all feel about it, but.
I'd like to see a copy of it.
If we if we had ten companies that we're doing business with and and you and I don't, I'm not telling you how to do it, how to invest it or whatever you're doing with it. I'd just like to see a copy of that and and when you get a report on it and it comes monthly, in in our meeting, then you can just hand that out along with.
Absolutely.
Terry, was there actually an investment we lost money on?
When. During COVID, there was one that we lost a little bit.
Was it a penalty for early withdrawal?
No.
Yes, went backwards?
It would just, the, it went down, the interest rate went down.
Has it recovered or?
Well, when you say the. If you invested a thousand dollars, so if they're invested at one percent went down, you know, we got. Seven hundred dollars next month and it went down back to a thousand, lost money there, but go below the principal? Did we lose money below the principal that we invested?
Oh, shouldn't have. Um do do you, when you invest money on Raymond James, do they tell you what you're investing it in?
She she gives them an idea of what she'd like. The only other thing, Chris, I had, so we could, we could, I would appreciate for. And um this cash collections here in the permits offices, is there a better way to handle this, Chris?
Yeah, we do have a plan um um for that. When they wrote that up, there was just a a a single person collecting the money and then bringing it over to the treasurer's office for deposit. Um our our prelim- preliminary idea is just to have uh. Tony sign off on that before it comes over, cause he's pretty well aware of, you know, how many permits are coming in. So he would have an idea of how much money should be deposited, you know, just. Just for a a second set of eyes before it makes its way into the bank account.
You get, don't they, don't they print those receipts in a computer system like it's permit, like number forty-seven or whatever, I mean, mine had a permit number on it and this was a cost and.
They do, um you know, but uh Grashit County. People, especially farmers and such, you know, they did, they they like to deal a lot with cash too, so.
Oh, yeah, I know.
So it's just something that uh just just a little improvement that we can do.
Okay. That's all I have.
Go ahead, sir.
Alright, sounds good, so I'll move right into the report. One item that I should have probably put in there that I did not, that I wanna share with you that. Uh our first ERP expenditure project and expenditure report is due on April thirtieth, so that will be something that'll be. Keeping my office busy for the rest of this month, um had a steady stream of calls and emails from. Local municipalities asking. Little things from how do you fill out this line, how do I log in, uh where do I go for this? What's the best way to report this, so uh our community outreach was extremely successful and. I am, I'm very happy that local townships and villages are are reaching out when they aren't sure what to do because. Uh it's important for them to get this first report in um and and make sure that they retain the money that was given to them. Uh the the first item in my report that was printed is was our drain prepayments, we didn't have any drain prepayments. Over the last months, our total has stayed at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for the year. Um again, that's lower than what the typical um debt payment would be for us. So that's that's telling me that we, we've made some significant headway that our debt payment plus our prepayments i- is less than what our total debt payment used to be. Our MERS OPEB balance as of, that should be April tenth. Or it should have been April thirteenth, I apologize. Our account is down five point two percent on the calendar year as a marker, the S and P is down seven point eight percent. Um then I included the ERP funds and project list that was updated to prior to this meeting. I also put that in our communication so that you guys would have that, um you commissioners would have that for the meeting. Um prior to the meeting, uh we have. Uh committed all but the one point five million dollar reserve. Um and I just want to. Reiterate that. Three point nine million dollars we are expecting to get from the feds uh at the end of May or beginning of June. So for some of these projects, most recent projects that you've been committing funds to, we do not have them yet from. Uh from the Department of Treasury. I'm gonna go ahead and move over to our cash balances for the end of March. Where you're looking at approximately five point eight million dollars in the general fund, which is. Up about one point four million from the prior year. Uh we do still have COVID recovery funds, but all of that is committed. And it it's been going down a little bit as reserves have been drawn by projects. Uh delinquent tax fund sitting at just about six point three million dollars. Uh compared to last year, uh a approximately the same amount. Um when I saw that number, I I thought that uh that didn't quite look right, um typically. Typically, we have a a a rising cash balance in our delinquent tax fund. And to see from March to March that it stayed the same, I I dug into our our general ledger a little bit. Um and I see that there was a a journal entry that was made. Due to uh something that was recommended in the audit and it just didn't quite hit right. Um so we do have an error in this reported number. It should be closer to about six point four and I will uh, I will make sure that that is investigated and fixed by the time that I report to you for. Uh the April cash balances. Does anybody have any questions related to that? I know that's not typically how my presentation for that goes. I will give you a few moments to look over the check register, if you have any questions on any of the checks um that were issued. There was a significant number of voids, uh we had a printer malfunction when we went to print them a couple weeks ago, so we had to avoid these and reissue them all.
Chris, I marked one uh 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 March eighteenth. Uh the Economic Development Corporation looks like, two hundred thousand?
Yes.
What is that?
That is greater Grashit.
Great, okay.
Taxes.
Yep, taxes.
Chris, there's a one here for Michigan State University, twenty-one thousand, what would that be for?
MSU extension.
I'm sorry, what was that?
MSU, MSU extension.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lemon, just uh let me know when you'd like me to move on.
Is there any other questions?
I think we can add on the checks.
No more on the checks.
I I have one more question, I see that there was a few our checks made out to the state of Michigan, what would that be for? Um, there were several of them here, but.
Yeah, we collect a lot of fines and fees and taxes for the state of Michigan.
Okay.
Most of. A lot of the departments, especially the courts, uh collect fees and within the law, it says certain percentages go to different areas. And um. A lot of the times we have to give approximately half of that to the state, so we cut that to them once, once a month. So I'm gonna go ahead and move over to the March revenue and expenditure report and I'll give you a moment to review that and ask some questions also.
Chris, do you see anything here we should be really paying attention to?
Um no, again, I I was hoping to go into a much greater detail and depth on this. Unfortunately, I didn't have time for prepar- to to prepare that. Um I I did take. A week's vacation not too long ago and I've been spending a lot of time uh working on the ARP contracts and. Uh getting that stuff prepared for. Submission to the feds, so I I do promise you very soon an in-depth look at our revenue and expenditure report. But no, I do not see anything um that is alarming at all.
One cool question here, Chris, uh the on the wind planning fund showing a deficit of ninety-five thousand in the. Um remaining budget, uh what's the issue there?
Yep, that's the revenue side of it that you're looking at.
Okay.
Um I I did not budget anything for the revenue, um because.
We're still spending money?
Well, I didn't expect, we we got a new project and and I think it was actually. In your district, one of the projects in your districts, the um. The planning team or the engineering or. Whoever is doing the project gave us ninety-five thousand dollars to help pay their engineering legal fees and such. So. I I under budgeted this because I wasn't expecting it to be active, is what I'm trying to say, so we will hit that up with a budget amendment.
Okay, sounds good.
But the the money and the expenditures are technically not the county's.
Right.
Anybody else have any other questions? I think we can go to the treasurer's.
Well, we've already discussed the investments, we have the receipt report and the transfers, does anybody have any questions about those?
Jill, you brought up the idea that we might wanna start looking at T-bills, is this something we could look at here, can we?
I guess, I guess uh what I'd like to say, Terry, is like. I could be available for you like an hour, couple hours a month. If you wanted me to look at what you're doing, you know, look at what they're offering you. Uh as far as investments, especially whatever Raymond James is offering you. Uh I cannot act in in any manner for the county, but if you just wanted me to look at things, if you wanted a second set of eyes. And if you wanted a second opinion, I would be glad to offer that to you.
Sure, that would be fine, I think we discussed that a couple of months ago, getting together and then.
And I just never.
Well, no, it wasn't just you, we just, but no, that would be fine.
Okay.
That would be good, I was gonna suggest too, if you guys want to see the copies or the quarterly reports, you know, that I get. Just giving those to you rather than a report, um like a copy of the CDs or or the reports that I get, but I don't know that. I could just hand, you know, I could just hand them to you at the meetings rather than putting them in the packet, I don't know how much information.
I I think that would be great and just because that was a uh item on the audit. Uh I think that would be great if we got actual copies, uh like on a quarterly basis of. What the investments are doing, rather than just a spreadsheet.
Yeah, that's, I think so too, I think that would be better, but do you want them in in packet form or do you just want me to bring a copy to the?
I think in packet form.
Okay.
Terry, uh out of these investments, I'm just looking at them, it looks like you've got seven money market accounts. And and so like when you go to Dreyfus and buy a money market account, is that just something that's been set up there? And you just invest money into it or?
Yes, yes.
I see that's got like six hundred bucks in it, but it's like Michigan class money market, where do you buy the, where do you get those, where's Michigan class, is that through somebody or is that?
No, Michigan class is is a company that we have investments with, uh we do, the road commission does.
I see.
Separate, uh that's not uh something that I go through a group for, that's actually, we deal uh directly with Michigan class.
So I'm here, what would you go through a group for, like, there's like a Nexus money market?
Yep, that, uh there's two groups that we deal with, uh got the CDs for the, through the banks. And then we've got, I'm trying to remember, the Michigan class and the rest of it, it. We've got the mercantile CD and the commercial or the Huntington CD. Those are not groups and the Michigan class, the rest of them are groups as far as I can.
Yeah, there's just not, I mean, there's not a lot of money to be made on this stuff, but.
Mm-hmm. As we talked, I think about looking into Cedars, you know, things like that, so.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can put over two fifty in a bank, you know, I think both these banks in town here have that Cedars program.
Hmm.
I'm sure Huntington does too.
Yeah, like I said, um, we talked about it, but we just have not.
Right.
Had a chance to sit down yet.
Alright, uh, I'll be in touch, we'll.
Okay, great, does anybody else have any questions? No, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Terry. I guess the sort of public comment, Matt, do you see anybody online?
There's not anybody connected in right now.
Alright, so I guess I'll entertain a motion to that to the regular meeting.
So more.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're back to the other meeting.
Alrighty, and I think the only thing we have left is uh any additional public comment.
I'd like to see if the sheriff has any updates for us. Uh, what happened in St. Louis, do you know anything about that, when you went through the rail and into the?
Motion to approve financial.
Yeah, we do need a motion to approve the uh financial, motion by Commissioner Bailey, we have a second. Second, second by Commissioner Lemberman, any discussion? All those in favor, aye, aye, opposed, nay? Anyone have anything else? Any public comment? Without objection, we're adjourned.